Hi.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Next time he can say.
Loud and clear.
Mark Serbuk.
President.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Jenny David.
Here.
Brad Newbecker.
Ron Vaughn.
President.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Any interest?
No.
No. Nope. No, no additions or corrections?
I don't see.
Item two, public comment. This is the first of two public comments. This is related to agenda items only. Is there any public comment in the room?
Regarding agenda item C or C?
Come on up, sir.
Thank you.
You know, you got three minutes, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Want to state your name?
My name is Brian Hart. I work CEO of Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine in Saginaw.
Is this got to do with what's on the agenda?
Well, I just saw a medical examiner agreement.
Public comment. This is a three-minute period.
Craig, he can give us, I'm giving us three minutes, and later on, if you want to talk again, you can.
Either way, whatever's more convenient.
This is fine. You're already here, so go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, I just wanted to introduce myself to everyone. I've spoken to, I think, a couple individuals here over the phone, never in person, so nice to meet everyone. Came to my attention a couple of nights ago that there have been a couple of meetings that I wanted to, that I noticed that there were some very careless and false narratives being spread around, so I wanted to come here and clear the air on those. What we do at MIFSM is we, for your county and your county citizens, we provide autopsy services. We provide transportation. We provide investigation unseen. We provide storage for bodies. We provide toxicology results, which usually take between two and three months because we have to send our toxicology results out of state. Currently, no labs in the state of Michigan perform toxicology results, but we send those to Pittsburgh, excuse me, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, but within the next couple of months, we will have toxicology opportunity at our lab in Saginaw. We will be the only lab in the state of Michigan that will be able to perform those. What that does is that creates a faster turnaround time for individuals, for citizens, your county, for autopsy reports, death certificates, which we know that will result heavily in them being able to resolve any life insurance matters or anything like that with deaths in their family. We also provide office administration management. We have a team of individuals who are there answering calls, communicating with funeral homes, communicating with law enforcement, and coordinating with those individuals as well. We also provide molecular genetics when appropriate in an autopsy case. We drove up here in person from Saginaw this morning despite the fact that schools and some businesses, including county buildings, were closed yesterday afternoon, and the schools are closed this morning because it was very important for us to come up here and dispel the rumors that we found over the last couple of meetings. Again, we were not here to be able to defend ourselves, so that's why we are here today. We believe that this is, you nice folks are looking for a solution to a problem that does not exist. We have behind me here, this gentleman is Dr. Roshan Mahabhir. He is, there is no medical examiner in the entire Michigan. Just three minutes.
You've got 10 seconds.
That is more qualified than that individual. He's triple board certified, ladies and gentlemen, a triple board certified pathologist, which means he's triple board certified in molecular pediatric pathology and forensic pathology.
Now, there will be more, you are, the medical examiner agreement is on the agenda, so if you want to stick around later.
Thank you very much.
Maybe some clarification and some questions.
Anything, any questions? Thank you for the time. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment in the room?
I just have one question.
Come on up, sir.
Just a question.
Is it something on the agenda?
Yeah, it's something.
Commissioner Scott, is it something on the agenda?
Yeah, do we get a chance to talk to you guys at that point?
If you want to go ahead now, and then we are discussing that as well.
Wait till the bottom. I'll see a couple more times.
Is there any public, any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Okay, item three, appointments. Item A, Brett Gudner, county clerk, related to department staffing level.
Good morning. Okay, so by now you've seen the two letters from the judges. I am requesting that we bring back only part-time position that we lost a few years ago due to the needs in my office. Obviously, right now, we're down one full-time person with plans on filling that position, but the court portion of it, we need, we need that extra person back. You guys have seen the letters. Judge Bennett, and I had a discussion with him the other day. Court cases are, they're increasing over the last year now with COVID. Where it's at, they're starting to increase more. We need help with the office in general, but we need to make sure that we're serving the public to the best of our ability, and right now, we can't. So we are requesting a 25-hour part-time person to come back in. Looking at Monday through Thursday just to help with the window, the phones. I did a job description there. We would put this person in charge of the concealed pistol licenses, which obviously, you guys all know, we've talked about it before. Those are also on the rise. That's a pretty big portion. Where one of the court clerks right now is taking on, she's taking on those duties plus the court. If we could split that so that she could focus just mainly on court, that would be really helpful. Uh, I also am still, after a year of being in my position, I'm not able to fully do my position yet. I'm still doing civil court. So this new person would take on that portion of what I'm doing so that I can start to do my job better. I gave you this morning a breakdown of numbers. Yeah, yeah, we did the, we figured out some numbers. The first to the left is this current budget that we're in, so March through September, being part-time, the hours, everything, it would come 11,000 to 4553. The thought with this is the money that we bring in from CPLs each year is roughly 16,000, what we make. This year, we transferred 10,000 into the general fund, so I mean, we're still, we're still, we have the money to do it. We're not really going to be spending much more to do that. Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Scott.
Just what you just said. You get about $11,000 a year on CPL.
16.
16, and you just put 10,000 in the general fund. Now, just a meeting ago, we couldn't put it in the general fund. We had to use it for CPL. I just approved spending $16,000 because we could not put it in the general fund. That's, I sat right there, and I asked a question. Does this have to be spent on CPL or general fund?
So long as we can show that the money is being spent to help administer the CPL requirement, Firearms Act. You can move it over there, but we've got to be able to justify that through accounting. I believe we can. I don't think that's going to be a question. This transfer from the CPL will be going specifically only to the clerk for this expense, so that we can connect as well. What we can't do, what we're not allowed to do under statute is just to take the CPL fund and just put it into the general fund for whatever expense we'd like to spend it on. Can't do that. We've got to be able to count for where those dollars are going. What Brett has presented is actually breaking down which positions are administering the CPL fund in the office, which frankly is probably enough by itself to say there's our connection with the CPL fund. There are other expenses that come with that. We just recently had to go through a purchase of a new printer to print, what is it, the licensing cards?
Yeah.
So that obviously would be an expense directly related to CPL. There's a portion of the phone expense that's related to CPL. There's a portion of their office supplies that you can tag to CPL. So I have no doubt that were we to be audited for this, that we have the paper trail, we need to show that those funds are. By doing it this way, and should you agree to do this, this will actually be worked in the resolution. We will show our auditors, we'll show the state, whomever needs to see it, that these are the monies we've transferred. These are the expenses that it's offset, and then it's just a matter of pulling invoices and time sheets to show for sure.
So how much money do we have left in the CPL after spending 16 for the furniture?
There's.
Or whatever.
Right now, they're, and the fund balance is 34.
34,000?
Ish, yeah, 34, 34 and 35.
Well, the other thing that got me, I read, I read this last night. I ran into Judge Williams yesterday morning. He told me a little bit about it. It was news to me. Yesterday afternoon, talking with the administrator, a little bit about it, didn't get into detail. I'm reading a letter from the judge, the 21st. We had a meeting. We asked you to give us a report about your department. I don't remember hearing anything about needing part-time people in your report.
No, because we bring that to the committee of the hall before. That's what I was told. That's why I did it this way.
Well, commissioners are in and out, and we, I think, I know, I know.
You know we need help.
Well, yeah, I see Diana's gone. I get that. I get that. And she's been on temporary leave, you know.
How long she been gone? I'm sorry, how long she been gone?
Month.
Second week in December.
Didn't we just give her, didn't she just get bumped up to 40 hours? Was she one of the ones that got bumped up to 40 hours?
Her and Tracy, yeah.
Right.
So was there another individual in that department that you've since bumped up to 40 hours since she's been gone? Because we approve that, correct? Hers and Tracy's.
Just approved Diana and Tracy to go to 40. The problem with the other two girls, they have their own stuff. They can't, they have their own stuff. I, I have been stepping in and doing some of Diana's stuff. Tracy's been doing some of, some of it.
Well, I just, I just like to know more things what's going on. I, the judge knew about this over 10 days ago. You know, I'm in and out of here.
I told, I mean, all fairness, I did tell you two weeks ago when we were in there having a conversation, I'm gonna be bringing something to you guys about personnel. I didn't want to get into detail.
Why not?
Commissioner, Sir Rick, do you have anything, questions? Mr. Vaughn?
No, we've talked. I kind of know what's, talked about Diana, so I kind of know what's going on. What's the idea with Diana? I mean, I mean.
She's retiring.
I know, but do you have somebody lined up yet?
No, we just, we posted it. She just gave us the notice Friday. We posted it.
So you posted it on Monday, Monday wasn't it?
Um.
Tuesday?
Yep, Monday.
I think it was Monday.
Monday.
I saw it.
Yeah.
So how long does it have to be posted internally?
To.
Is it posted both right now?
It should be in the newspaper. It's on Indeed. I want to say it was the 11th that it's internally.
That's a certain requirement they gotta have.
Yep. The week-long posting internally. February 11th.
Is when it goes public?
Is when the internal posting is done.
So then is it, intro, you mean, internal candidates are able to apply for that position, and then it goes public, or is it already public?
Public now.
Okay. Tim, does the budget, can, does the budget have the money to support this?
That's what the clerk was just explaining too, is that we, obviously, will bring some funding over from the CPL fund to help this. But one key point is when we do end up filling the deputy position that Diana held, she was at the top of the pay rate, okay? Position that, when it's filled, will be at the bottom of the pay rate, so there's going to be significant savings there for the rest of the year. We'll run the math. We'll figure out exactly what that is, and so then the transfer that we would ask for from the CPL would cover the balance, should there be a balance. I think the quote was, I don't have it, what was it, something along the lines of 11,246 that would be needed to pay the position through the end of the fiscal year. If that level of savings is already realized through the transition of personnel, we won't need to transfer anything. So we've got two sources to bring it from. Bottom line is the general fund won't change as far as what's been budgeted.
The bottom line is the bottom line will change.
How long ago was this position cut? This position was cut when, was that 16?
The part-time first?
Yeah, the, while the, the. Yeah, 16, 2016. This is the difference. This is where they would start 14.
I see that.
Yeah, so that after, because after a year, they get bumped up, so the four-year, but that would be the difference between Diana.
I would just think that bringing into a department like this, you, you already have a full-time that's posted. You would want to get that individual in there, that individual trained up to speed, and then possibly look at a, a part-time if still needed, but bringing two brand-new individuals into your department, I, I would think that'd be pretty difficult, but.
We've.
You have a candidate in mind for the part-time? You know somebody that only wants to work part-time and?
I have. Well, I haven't reached out to anybody. We have talked about it and have a couple people in mind, but without, I mean, it's a 50/50 chance of getting it or not getting it.
Well, I'm just saying, if you had somebody already in mind that already has expressed that they want to work part-time only, then I'd see, I'd see going ahead, but.
I've had, we've had a conversation with somebody from a township.
Well, like Jenny says, it's, I mean, your priority is to get your full-time up and running for sure.
Because Diana was there a long time. I mean, she, it's gotta be a huge loss.
So are you advertising? No, you're not advertising.
Well, just to clarify, from a hiring standpoint, anybody who was qualified and interested in the position were to prove would be given consideration. So whether we've talked to anybody or not, nobody, just for the record, has an inside track.
Right, no, no.
Including me.
Any other questions?
Inside track.
Get enough of you.
No other questions?
If you can talk this over with.
And I've, I've had, we.
If you can talk this over with the elected official judge or any of the judges, I'm an elected official. You can talk to me about it. I don't think anybody has to wait until the meeting to just to talk to somebody about it.
Thank you for clarifying that for future.
Because this, this is what we keep saying over and over again. We would just want to, we don't want to hear it off the street. I want to hear it up, I want to hear it right. Right straight.
I don't want any talk behind the scenes before you guys know the full details and get shut down before I even am able to present it.
Would you guys like further discussion about this? Would you like this put on for a resolution for next meeting? What would you like, Commissioner Serick?
Resolution for the next meeting.
Mr. Vaughn?
I agree. Oh, I agree. Yeah, we have to, but it's just.
Want to put it on for the next meeting? 3B, Karen Paglowski, County Treasurer, related folder slash inserter slash sealer quotes.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In your agenda packet is information regarding a folder inserter machine. I was recently informed the machine that we have is quite antiquated, and the last time a repair was done, the repair person, our salesperson, who also does the repairs and maintenance on the machine, had informed us that it is antiquated, and it's becoming more and more difficult to get parts for this machine.
For water support.
Yeah.
Way it goes.
Yes, so I'd gone to Tim and informed him about this machine and the issue, and he said, Karen, get three quotes, bring the information to the board. So here you have three, three quotes from different companies. One, automated business equipment is the current sales office that we use, and we've been very happy with their service. When we have an issue with the machine, he is quick to respond to any needs that we have. We reached out to Pitney Bowes, who also gave us a comparable quote. However, the Pitney Bowes machine requires special envelopes that have a greater cost than regular envelopes to use this, to use the machine. Thepaperfolder.com was one that we found online, and the price was higher. The automated business equipment, just again, the company that we currently use, they will give us a trade-in discount for the machine that we have, as well as carry over the maintenance agreement that I currently have on the existing machine, and the new machine would come with one year of maintenance already, so it would be 2024 before we'd have to pay for any maintenance on that particular machine. Just to give you an idea of how often this machine is used, treasurer's office, we do mailings for delinquent tax notices in May and September. We also do a dog license mailing in October, so our office alone, we're doing upwards of about seven, approximately 7,000 mail items a year. We also perform stuffing and inserting for other offices, the clerk's office. We do approximately 5,000, well, 5,500 just for the one time. In the summer, in addition to the jury notices and.
That can be like, depending on, depending on who's on.
The panels.
The panels, yeah. Sometimes it's 100, sometimes it's 100.
So approximately 1,200 a year, just in jury notices. We also do stuffing service for equalization who do real, real property statements that they use for their sale studies, anywhere from 50 to 100 items a month, and I have offered it to the housing department as a service to them as well. So approximately four, between 13,000 and 14,000 items are stuffed through this machine a year. So it is something that is utilized, not just by my office, but by other offices as well. So what I would like to do is purchase the machine through automated business equipment. I would be able to pay for half of the cost through the tax reversion fund, and I'm looking for the county to pay the other half of the machine. And again, it would be two years of maintenance with this machine, so there's a savings there compared to the.
What is the maintenance agreement cost of, oh, what, 15, 16 hundred dollars a year?
No, 1,200. And the first, first year's free, and he's not going to charge me anything extra.
There's 2400 dollar savings right there.
Right at the gate.
Questions, Commissioner Serick?
Ask them, they've been answered.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
I mean, this old, old machine, huh? 20, 20 years old, you think?
It's at least 10. It's at least 10 years old.
And I can tell you, every time we go to use it.
It jams.
It jams multiple times. Seems like I have to call every time.
Are you going to be able to get this machine? Yes, you are. It is available. Mr. Vaughn?
That's what I was going to ask. How old is this other machine? You just answered that.
Do you have the funds, Tim, to back up paying for half of this, which would be a little over 7 grand, right?
Right, there is a little over 19,200 left in our contingency line, so the answer is yes.
Can some of these departments pay for it since they're using it?
If we have a department that has, operates on a special fund, yeah, that would make a lot of sense. I don't know who all uses it, so.
Well.
And.
Equalization, clerk.
Their general fund.
Jury.
Jury.
General fund.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do a scan. We'll see who's using it, and if there's a special fund we can tap, we'll do that.
Registered, you use it for them at all?
They, no.
Okay.
They don't do any mailings, but equalization, clerk's office, and I've operated for the housing department, we do a monthly mailing as well.
CPL?
Me.
Anything? You've had 34-ish.
We, we do a monthly.
Yeah, I got a letter. I got a letter in the mail when mine was getting renewed. I did.
Not when we send the cards, but the renewal letters.
Some need tax bills all the time. You have a problem getting them all.
So we'll put that out for resolution.
Thank you.
You got this one.
Thank you. Item 3C, Tom Spencer. Come on up.
Is this that machine fold this?
No, no, I had to check, pulled it down.
I am in the guidance final.
Hi, Tom.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Um, I was asked by the security personnel about taking a look at the x-ray machine that we received from Ross Common. It's having some technical difficulties, and I was told that the information went to Tim, and I asked him if he wanted me to reach out and get quotes on getting it repaired and prepared the information that's in your board folder. I did the best I could with what I had to work with anyways. I'm telling them, basically, I don't think any priority service for this thing, if we're going to do anything with it. I'm just gathering this information. I don't really have any expertise in this x-ray machine. I just know that it's having problems on certain days. They fight with it half the morning trying to get it to work, and then it works for part of the day. They unplug it, and that's it. But basically, 4,200 bucks a year maintenance plan on it, and Ford wants to invest the money in it, or if Ross Common found a cheap way to get rid of it.
That's kind of, because we got it for free, correct?
Yeah.
Because they supposedly got a new one, and now we've had it for how long?
I, six, eight months, I'd say.
Six months, but we've had it active for.
Probably about five months out of that. I mean, it sat underneath the stairs till we, we were talking, they were talking about rearranging the entrance and everything, and finally, we wheeled it down, and I realized that with it being in the hallway, it wasn't as big of a constraint as what was originally thought.
We have not had anybody come and actually see what's wrong with it quite yet, correct?
No, it is not under any maintenance plan. I did reach out yesterday and I asked how much for a service call, or do you even provide an hourly rate plus parts? And she replied back, yes. So I had to reply back, okay, what is it?
How old is that? Do we know how, did he tell us, what the x-ray machine is?
No, I could look it up, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Because a new one, I somehow remember like 32, 36, is my officer?
I don't know.
I don't remember neither.
I know somebody that has a call from Ross Common. I could find that. I'll give you that information, but I don't know.
Thoughts, Commissioner Serick?
Curious as to what the hourly rate would be for him to come in and take a look at it, and the other thing would be for, of course, security people to weigh in on. Obviously, it's a benefit, but is it truly needed?
I know Jim did say yesterday he's found more nights with it, but.
Right.
Nothing larger than that.
So you gave us two different options here, right? You recommended this cost a service plan going forward. This is the cost of the service plan that you.
The first year of onsite maintenance is 4,257. There's a $1,300 maintenance plan, which does not include the problem that we're having with it now. That's why I asked, is, does the 2,457 include that $1,300 package? And they said, no. And I'm not even really sure what the radiation survey and everything does. I mean, I'm certainly not qualified to work on this piece of equipment.
So we don't know what this 4,257 for a service plan is, is actually even going to cover?
That should cover the repair, yes, because parts and labor are all included for one year. But it doesn't include that radiation survey, which I'm not, I'm totally sure of what that includes. I can still ask some questions by all, by all means.
Commissioner Scott?
I don't know. Maybe we should just, it's great to look all this up, but maybe we can talk to Smith, that, and whoever, whoever does this, find out exactly what. find out exactly what, what it's got. I don't want to spend 4200 for him to turn around and say, oh, it's all the radiation part of it. And now I gotta start charging you more, you know? I, I really, when they came and said they had this machine available, I liked the idea. I had been to Ross Common. I saw news there. I, I have expressed my opinion to the security chief about scanning and who gets scanned and how often and everything else. If we, if we're going to spend the money for this, I hope that everybody going through that thing gets, we use this x-ray machine. Everybody. I understand that Monday, everyone that entered the building had to be scanned by the security.
They plan on.
See the pockets and everything.
And the security meeting, they did bring that up and they plan on doing that. Um, I don't know if, if they gave a specific like monthly or just spontaneously doing, where everybody has to go through.
I, 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 I guess I led the charge to get the metal detector downstairs. I, I think it's, I think we should be using it, but if we're going to spend money for it, we're going to spend money for it, we should use it. And not just say it's there and not just say that everybody walks in the door, it's okay. I, I can't say it enough. The postal worker went in the post office and shot the people in the post office. The worker did, not the general public. The kid in school went in that school day after day after day. Then he turned around and shot people.
Commissioner Van?
No.
Commissioner Van?
Yes, I'm, I'm the one that went and got it. I went and picked it up.
Ross Common?
Yeah. And, and they had told us up there that there was an issue with it. They didn't know what the problem was. But I'm, I'm in agreeance with Craig. I, I think it needs to be fixed. I don't know. I would find out what the hourly rate is to come up and figure out what's going on with it. Instead of doing a maintenance program, it might be an easy fix. I know they turn it off and leave it off for 10 minutes, turn it back on and it seems to work the rest of the day. Or.
Right. I think we kind of got off topic here. Our topic is this machine.
Right.
I, I don't disagree. I think this machine is definitely an asset. However, I think we need to find out how old it is, what the exact problem is, how much it's going to cost us before we decide if we're going to invest money into this possible 30-year-old machine.
That's fine with me.
I mean, we need more information, I feel, going forward, um, to figure out what we're exactly going to do. And I think it'd be a good idea also to touch base with our emergency manager to make sure that there's no grants or, um, funding out there where we can apply for to get a brand-new possible machine where there probably would be a warranty and a service fee that would come with it for a period of time.
That's no problem. I'll reach out to Mike. I can tell you that most of Mike's money is never available right now.
I'm sure.
Always in the future. Next year, the following year, we can look at it.
I'd like, and maybe Ross Common has all that information, how old it is and, and where do these, where do these people come from to do this service?
They're in Michigan. I know that they got texts all over because I asked the lady, like, where, do you have somebody local? And she said, yes. And there was a number on the machine, the repair tech.
I would just like more information before we make a decision with this.
I just, I wanted to know what questions you guys had before I move forward. So I can call Mike for you. I've got a, he called me yesterday and I did call back.
Anything else, guys? Okay, so we'll continue to put this on.
Yeah. Thanks for the.
Thanks, Tom.
I'm third.
Uh, item for discussion items for a auto insurance reform. Tim?
You had asked at one of the prior meetings when this came up that we reach out to our insurance carrier and ask their views on this. I did get Kevin's response to you in an email. And he was actually supportive of investigating this further from a legislative perspective. I see Mr. Harrison is on Zoom and.
Sorry, I forgot your name. Eddie. Eddie is the two who presented last time with the issue are both present here too, if you need any additional discussion. I think the proposal was that the board consider a resolution to support legislative changes to the auto insurance reform to address the shortcomings for the long-term issue. So let's, I think that.
Would you like to come up, sir? You have to come up and.
He wants.
Tell us your name and.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. My name is Edward Ferens from Compassionate Care Health Services. There has been some, a little bit of progress with the legislature. They introduced a bill, Philip Green, Philip Green introduced a bill that has gone to the insurance committee. There are 17 members of that committee. It is currently sitting there now for a vote. There's a couple more bills there. I, I, we'd appreciate it if you just sent a general letter. It doesn't have to be specific kind of bill, but to do something with the fee schedule. That is the biggest portion of it. I mean, there are some other outlying issues, but the fee schedule is what is hurting a lot of small businesses in Michigan. There is 55% of legislators realize there's an issue. We just need to get over that hump of giving it out for a vote. There is Jason Wentworth, Mike Sherkey, and Darren Rendon, Ryan Verben and Brenda Carter are a couple of the higher-ups that need to get this thing moving. Darren Rendon is a local, our local district rep here. So she represents this community. It'd be nice if we could just help push that to get it over that hump of getting it out for a vote. That is a lot of the complaints that it hasn't come out for a vote, to vote on, to get it passed.
Is there a timeline?
No, the problem is the bill could set there if it doesn't come up for a vote. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian. It's hard to keep up with all this stuff, but if it just sets there, they don't have to introduce it. It was introduced, but they don't have to go any farther. It could set in the committee for, for a long time. It's already been seven months. They figure another, there's going to be 246 companies that will no longer take auto after the first 12 months of this and we're already at month seven. So if we, if we could get the local, you know, to help us out, push some emails out. It does concern all of us. Everybody has the same issue. Every, I'm going to assume all of you guys paid for unlimited coverage. The problem is you will not be getting that unlimited coverage because there won't be any businesses to care to you. So it affects all of us. It affects some businesses in town. I'm down employees. We have gotten 30 calls roughly to take no fault clients and we've turned them all down. They want to reimburse us $14.52. So we need to get something done. And we would appreciate the support of you guys to help us out with that.
So without a change, you're going to go out of business?
Well, not, a lot of people have just did solely auto. We do auto VA. We do several things. So the people that are doing solely auto are going out of business.
Mr. Here, I'm sorry. Did you have anything to add? I was going to have you add before we opened up conversation. So, Mr. Here.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, guys. And good morning, everyone. I, I, sorry, I'm not able to be in person today. And thanks for having us again, first and foremost. And, and again, thanks, thanks Eddie for, obviously, your passion and, and being the, obviously, the local guy, right? I mean, Eddie's probably the premier provider in the West Branch and in Oklahoma area. And so we're, we're very fortunate to be working alongside him with you guys as well, because we do serve in, in the Oklahoma County and surrounding counties also. But, yeah, I, I think, you know, the biggest thing, kind of like we touched on, and Eddie alluded to it, that the bill that is in now the House Committee was worked on in accordance with leadership. Again, that was a bill that for floor leader Ben Frederick was tasked and worked with Phil Green to, to come to a solution. And so that did get put in a couple of weeks ago now. And we do believe that there are discussions going on behind the scenes on what to do here, right? And, and that this truly is something that, that I guess does need to be looked at from the legislative perspective. So we're, we do feel as if we're getting momentum in that, in that sense. And, and so we, I, we use the analogy, we kind of attribute it to a rugby scrum where we're all kind of trying to push this ball over the line and, and hoping that you as a county board, should you see it fit, because Eddie, Eddie hit the nail on the head, right? When he said this is a, an individual, every person issue, right? As we feel obligated doing the work that we do to, to share, like, hey, right now, if there's not a change legislatively, people won't get what they pay for when they select that unlimited coverage. And, and so because again, I mean, there, we've, we've talked with insurance companies, we've talked with adjusters, we've talked with DIPS, even at the state level, and DIPS even has, has affirmed the fact that if we get paid 55% of what we were charging, that's, that's how the statute reads. And so there's not a lot of recourse around that. And so again, a $30 an hour bill rate, which again, is similar to what we would have looked to collect across different insurances, whether it's VA or work comp. You know, so we weren't like others, we weren't in the home health sector really gouging that system. Unfortunately, others did, and that's kind of what has given providers like ourselves a, a bad name that we have to undo. But so again, thankful for Eddie and, and that integrity that we carry and he carries to, to be that voice locally for you guys. At, at the same time, we're, we are needing, we are needing some help. We do believe that that local voice in, in the sense of a resolution does, does have quite a bit of weight from the local elected official perspective. And again, can't, can't stress it enough, but we are also, again, not advocating to go back to the system we had prior. The current auto insurance system from the reforms in 19, which, which is very helpful, now can, now obtains and has what's known as utilization review, which helps and manage, just like other insurance companies that work with healthcare, whether it's Blue Cross Blue Shield, Priority Health, Medicare. They, they have systems that are managing the appropriateness of the care delivered. And so that is there, that is different from the pre-2019 and we are advocating to remain with those steadfast changes. At the same time, we, we do believe that this 55% reduction for home health, that again, wasn't a service or wasn't an industry that had an egregious overcharge, needs to be addressed so that statutorily, families that select unlimited care and coverage will get ultimately what they paid for. Should, unfortunately, heaven forbid, should they have a need to use it. And so we do, again, we do believe every little bit helps from a advocacy standpoint. And, and so would, would really welcome, again, your support in that as a board in, in helping, helping to continue to serve and support not only the local county, but also other residents across Michigan that are, that are needing these services.
We did, you guys all, we did ask our insurance carrier, Mr. Elliott, to send a response. Did you guys get an opportunity to read that?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Um, as far, I see both sides of this. Unfortunately, it did take us years to get to this point to where we're at right now. I think both parties need to sit down and, and discuss and come up with a compromise because this affects everybody, essentially everybody. Do you know how many home healthcare agi, um, agencies there are in Oklahoma County that only accept auto insurance? I know there was one that already went out of business.
I don't. I, um, there was some, Serenity was one that went out of business. We have stopped taking them. I'm not sure about Dobson. I don't know if they've closed the doors, but that office has never opened. I don't really know. Serenity has recently gone under. That was no auto. And the only one that, I think that's actually left is Hartman. And I don't know that they do private business past Standish in the Northern District anymore. I know that's been a discussion.
They don't do just auto.
No, but they do, right. They do several, but that's the biggest thing is everybody just stop taking auto. And that's the problem because nobody can get care.
Um, it's the lack of cap over years that got us to this point.
Well, and it's not like, like Brian said, it's not the home care agencies. So when you go in the hospital, the ER room and you pay $600 for an aspirin, obviously there's problems.
All across board.
Yes.
But that includes home health care agencies.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying there hasn't been that some have did this, but the problem with the people that were ethical about it and charged, you know, $25, our average rate's $25. You know, some of them are getting paid, I'm not having proof right here, $12.60. We can't even send anybody to the home for that.
Commissioner, I'm in favor of, of, of composing some type of support. I just think we have to be very cautious with our wording and, and I would like it to be more just that more of a discussion and, and a compromise on both parties. I just want to be very cautious with our wording, but that's my, my opinion, Commissioner.
I, I think, you know, it'd be appropriate to do the same, you know, say, work towards a fair and reasonable equitable fee schedule.
We, there was one, there is some that are introduced, which the VA uses, and they use that across the state of Michigan. So that's what was introduced, the fee schedule the VA currently uses. So the federal government uses this rate sheet and that's what's being introduced.
So right now is that, since that's been introduced, is that being discussed? Has that been denied?
That's the one that is setting in the insurance committee.
It's sitting there.
Yes.
So it needs to get voted out of committee. So if we could take and send a letter to Darren Rendon or whomever, or a resolution saying, you know, please, you know.
Move forward discussion.
Move forward to a fair and reasonable fee schedule, equitable, you know, for both sides.
Yeah, that, I think that, that's exa, that's absolutely, I'm sorry to interrupt, guys. That's absolutely what we're, we're seeking, right? We don't, we don't want the county, in any county for that matter, because again, we, we, we understand that we're in the weeds here, right? We're, we're down in, in an industry in, in care that, that, you know, fortunately, we specialize in for those that need it and, and understand that not everybody may have the bandwidth, given everything else you guys are always working on, right? To, to understand all the nitty-gritty. So that is, our, our preference would be, yeah, that, that the board is comfortable just, if, if so, putting forth something that is again, encouraging the state to look at this, this narrowed view for home healthcare, right? And, and what that looks like. Because I, so, because again, not, not to, and not, not to contradict necessarily chairwoman, but so from a home health perspective, yeah, we, we didn't, we don't charge, you know, $600 for, for that aspirin. We don't have that a la carte lined items, for instance, or, or again, those MRI examples that we hear so often, right? That, that, you know, it's 5,000% above what Medicare would, would charge. And there's the loopholes there that attorneys found to, to work with for years. So again, we're very supportive of not going back there and, and not taking the, the statute back to that. We, we have had conversations with, with those that were involved in 2019 and, and they do, and have specified that more of that, that blanket language was put in by the governor's team to, to bring down some of those extra things like the 600 or the 300, whatever it was, dollar aspirin, for instance. And, and so again, home health, it is a pretty, a pretty straightforward business. And it obviously, as, as you know, even doing your own work in healthcare, it's very service-delivered. And, and so that's, that's where we truly do focus our, our care and delivery. And like Eddie suggested, now again, getting reimbursed, just because that's what the law says, getting reimbursed $12.65 or whatever it was for the hourly rate of a caregiver. Yeah, those companies won't be able to do that. And so those that have been receiving service up until this point and then going forward now selecting unlimited, it, yeah, certainly seems like there needs to be something addressed there. And, and I, I do, I will say, I, you know, we don't ever speak for any legislator. We've learned that clearly. We don't know much, but we know not to do that. We have, we have heard that Darren Rendon's office is starting to understand that this home health challenge may be needing to be looked at and addressed. And, and so we do have confidence that they are working on something. They are working on the bill amongst the leadership. So again, I think anything that just says, hey, can you continue to dive into this? And, and doing so certainly has a ton of weight and, and support. And, and we would really appreciate that.
Mr. Scott?
Well, I think this is outside our realm. I think there's this perspect, perception that, yeah, that if we, we throw off this recommendation that, that the state legislators are really listening to it, I, I highly doubt it. I think personally, I think Rendon's office is playing duck mode right now. She's done it the end of the year. I think we saw that when we talked, talked to her about the Kirtland issue. This is kind of like the Kirtland issue. We were asked to, as the board, to throw this out there to, because more or less perception. I'm just a little little off on a couple of things you said, and that's why I asked about. So I'm wondering now if I get, if I get hurt in an auto accident, because I have auto insurance, do I, do I get healthcare? Or is there no one going to give me healthcare?
Uh, well, there's no one's going to take care of you. So under, under the auto, let's say your, let's say your health insurance was primary. You get in an auto accident. So say you have Blue Cross.
I got the best healthcare there is.
Well, I can tell you right now.
If I get hurt in an accident in a car, am I going to get healthcare someplace or not?
Let me explain this to you. So under healthcare, under health insurance, you have health insurance. Let's say Blue Cross Blue Shield at the top of the line.
It is.
Well, I can tell you it ain't going to be. So you get in a car accident, they're going to pay until you can sustain a normal daily activity. Then they're going to drop you. Then who's going to cover?
Auto app again.
Your auto's going to pick up, but if they're going to pay me $15 an hour, I'm not going to go into your home to take care of you. I, I financially cannot afford to go in there and pay someone $18 an hour. That's what we average to pay right now. I have a sheet to calculate it. State's requiring all the stuff to pay, but on the other hand, they're cutting our reimbursement. So you, no, the answer to your question is you may for a year or two and you're going to have a. five thousand dollar deductible for your health insurance, but as soon as that runs out, you will not have anybody to take care of you. And some of these guys have been on auto insurance for twenty years. We have a client right now, has been a TBI for twenty years. That started in nineteen seventy-three. Everybody has paid their premiums from day one, and now they're not getting the care that they paid for. And it's exactly what's gonna happen to everyone sitting on this board, that they get into an auto accident.
And so that, that is kind of the, the challenge of needing, uh, something to, again, to change. And I think the state again is starting to see that. Commissioner Scott, I know I, I can sense your maybe, maybe skepticism. Uh, but again, we really appreciate the discussion. Yeah, I mean, the, the truth of the matter is, like Eddie said, if, because, because your health insurance doesn't cover if you needed an hourly care support. For instance, if you were, if somebody was injured to the degree they couldn't get up on their own to go to the bathroom, and you needed somebody there to help you get on and off the toilet safely, and, and let's say you had a, you know, broken leg or something. Right now, care providers aren't accepting those patients to take them and bring them into the, and bring caregivers into the home. Uh, because, because again, the challenges and the cuts to essentially the half, half cut of reimbursement that we're facing. Because before we would, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead. I did not mean to cut you off. I'm sorry.
No, no. So, so before, right, we would, we, you know, would, would bill, like Eddie said, between twenty-five and thirty dollars an hour to your insurance company, we'd send in a caregiver who's trained in a, an employee of ours. We pay them around fifteen. So then they have the work. There's work comp and, and social security and things that we have to pay as an employer. And then there's training and overhead costs that go into that. And that, that was the business model, right? Very similar to if we have a family that chooses like to pay privately for service, it's the same, it's the same thing. Um, but again, right now, that reimbursement from thirty dollars or twenty-five, or whatever it is, is now getting reimbursed back at twelve dollars and sixty-five cents or fourteen dollars and fifty cents. Providers just can't afford to work with people that, that have those needs and have that insurance right now. Which, which is the, which is the problem.
What got us here, Commissioner Scott, is, is like the example they gave with the traumatic brain injury, say to unfortunately to a, a eighteen-year-old. They live forty, fifty years paying for twenty-four-hour care. There was no cap. To the amount of coverage to the amount that was being charged, that unfortunately has got us to a very difficult situation. Very high auto insurance, number one, like we talked, Michigan is. So now unfortunately, then they made a drastic change and went down to this. There has to be, uh, you brought, I mean, they went down to, again, the reimbursement of fourteen dollars an hour. There has to be a happy medium. You, you gotta see both sides of this. And I'm just recommending a letter asking for further discussion for both parties to sit down, have conversation, and come up with a better compromise. I don't think we need to take a position. I don't think we should take a position. I think we should just, I agree, I agree. I think we need to be very cautious with our wording.
Well, you're not not asking for a resolution. He's asking for a letter.
Correct.
We've asked for the information from Deavolt. We've, we've got what he said. Basically, he agrees with basically the letter to getting them to compromise.
To have discussion.
To have discussion. Very much in agreeance with you, Jeff.
Okay, so we're good composing a letter, just being very cautious with our verbiage. Not taking offense.
Sure. So going the route of the letter, makes it a little more difficult because typically you have the board voting to say, yes, do this. And I know this is gonna sound very bureaucratic and redundant, but perhaps a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a letter stating the board's position. And then we proceed with the letter, or we could put it all into a resolution and send the resolution forward. Either, either option works.
When you said take a stand, what did you mean by that?
Well, the board speaks through its resolutions, meaning at least three commissioners are gonna have to say, yes, go forward with the letter that you would then sign.
And the letter just says, Lansing, will you just get along?
And, yeah, I'm like.
Will you talk? Will you communicate?
Will you please communicate?
Yeah, yeah. Wow, so just as an, another option, perhaps you just approve a resolution making those statements. And if individual commissioners want to write letters on your own behalf, you know, no problem, because you'll be consistent then with the resolution. Uh, but I did, it just, my preference would be to see you do the resolution over the letter. That way, there's no question that the full board is saying, we'd like you to look into this further.
Oh.
We appreciate it.
I'm good with that. You guys give it that, a resolution for the next meeting? Commissioner Scott? Commissioner, yes, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Of course. We'll talk to you guys soon.
Item C, medical examiner agreement. What? Oh, shoot, I'm sorry. DHHS want transferred.
And this will be very brief. Uh, DHHS notified us that, uh, the resolution that we approved transferring the two thousand nine hundred one dollar to be used for uh, critical services, uh, was, would have to be changed. They had an additional invoice come in that went against their previous fiscal year. So what we would need to do is rescind our resolution approving the twenty-nine oh one and then, uh, state that that new number will be one thousand eight hundred thirty dollars. Uh, the lesson we learned from this is if this happens again next year, uh, we're the resolution that just simply says transfer the surplus that, that purpose, so we don't have to deal with this again. And these things, this is not uncommon. You know, to see an invoice come in late that now has to be, uh, accounted for in the prior fiscal year. Uh, so that, that's all this is. It's really, uh, you know, pretty routine item, just that because we put that number in the resolution, we need to make the correction.
What's this down here, this at the very bottom where it says critical needs fund, seven thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-one cents?
I believe that's the balance.
That's the balance.
Okay.
That's the balance in front.
Questions? So we need a resolution for that as well?
Yes.
To transfer these ones, changing the numbers, tweaking them. Yes. Commissioner Scott, did you have anything?
Oh, I voted against it last time. I'll vote against it this time.
Perfect.
Okay.
Next, item C, medical examiner agreement. Do I take the role on this?
Sure. This is a continuation of discussion that we've had, uh, the last few meetings now. To recall, it was the January sixth meeting where we had, uh, statements that were made, uh, concerning, uh, administration of that contract in the field. And, uh, commission had asked that we continue the discussion now. So that's where we are. And of course, we have our representatives from the institute are here to, if there are questions.
So you guys are, are they up to date as far as, um, in that January meeting that you just discussed, there were some current starts brought to the board. You can, guys can come on up.
Oh, thank you very much. I don't want to speak out of turn.
So, so we didn't go looking for problems. Some problems were brought to us.
I, I understand completely. Thank you for, for mentioning that.
There's another chair there, guys.
I have an answer to your x-ray question.
Oh.
And I will shoot up to you. Sorry, I was trying to, I didn't wanna, five hundred sixty-nine dollars an hour.
Nope.
Five hundred sixty-nine dollars for a service call and then plus an hourly after that. Not us. That's what we're paying. It just came across my desk this week. So like, oh, x-ray machine. I know about this too.
How much was your x-ray machine? Yours is building this fairly new?
You know, um, we bought it new. It's fourteen months old and it's just passed its twelve month. We had obviously free services under warranty for the twelve months. I'd have to check that. But it's, it's obviously not the same kind of x-ray machine, but it's a bigger x-ray machine that we use for autopsies. But it's, but it's a bigger one. But yes, so.
You don't recall.
Two months after. I don't recall, but I can get that information for you. And I'll get that number.
Are you having issues with it? Oh, you are.
We had to, I have, I had to pay that five sixty-nine because it's gotta get done. So we can have it for autopsies. And you know how it is, when you need something done overnight, they so anyways.
We were just discussing that. Okay.
It's like going to the emergency room versus going to your primary care physician.
Right, of course you're right. Hundred percent right.
Okay. So I don't know, did you have an opportunity to see, to watch the concerns that were brought to us?
I did. Man, Chairwoman, yes.
Okay.
We did, we all did. Exactly. And, and just so, this is our medical examiner, Dr. Ashan Mahabir. Um, this is our, uh, uh, chief MEI, lead MEI. This is Stephen Heater. Um, since there were some questions about our medical examiner investigations, we thought we'd bring him as well. If there are any questions, that, that's the one point we want to get across to anyone here. Any questions, please reach out. I brought business cards, contact information. We're happy to answer any questions. Go ahead, ma'am.
Since those were brought to us, have you reached out to those two individuals that brought those issues to us?
We have tried to, yes. I believe they were reached out to yesterday. Uh, one gentleman I know that we could not get a hold of, um, I believe either one we could get, we could not get a hold of. We've also tried to get a hold of, um, with due respect, the prosecuting attorney here for Ogumah County. I've left messages, um, via, uh, voicemail, via, uh, through the secretary there, the, the young lady that answered. Um, I tried to ascertain her email, just to send an email as well, um, which was denied, but we're trying, we're, we're a very transparent organization. We're trying to make sure that everybody is comfortable with services that we provide. What we took from the videos was, um, that our MEIs are not qualified. Um, what we did here is we made a, um, as she here, these are the medical examining investigators for your county. And as you can see, do you mind if I pass these out?
No, please.
Um, as you can see, everyone is thoroughly, um, credentialed here. All have medical examining, uh, medical backgrounds. We have firefighters, police officers, nurses, uh, emergency, uh, medical technicians in the US Army. I'm sorry. I don't, we don't, that was what was alarming is that we don't understand where those accusations came from. So we wanted to be able to provide that information to you. I have also brought along, just for your references, and in case you ever have any questions specifically about Dr. Mahabir and his credentials, I brought along his CV. And this is very important. I just want to make sure, if I did not work in this organization, I would not understand this. So if you don't mind, I'll just explain that just in case. And if you have any questions, please interrupt me. Dr. Mahabir is board, is a board certified pathologist. Most pathologists are, um, board certified, single board certified. This gentleman is triple board certified. On average, in each state in the country, there are ten forensic pathologists. On average, there's around five hundred in the entire United States. This man is one of those, let's say, ten in each state. This man is one of those ten. He also has uh, in atomic and clinical, uh, board certification for pathology. He also has, this is very important, he also has board certification as a pediatric pathologist. There are an average of three per state. There are three in the state of Michigan. This man holds one of those as well. So holding all three, there's, there's no medical examiner in the state of Michigan more qualified than this individual. I wanted to, and a CV, which is his resume, is right along here with this information. Um, if you'd like, folks, I made copies of everything. Just for your, um, of course, just for your reference. I don't seem to have, there's one more here. There was another discussion concerning, there's an accusation made that MIFSM turns down autopsy requests. That has never, ever, ever happened. We have, up to this point, we have never had any issues brought to our attention with services in Ogumah County. From our experiences, your frontline emergency workers, fire, police, EMS have grown relationships with our MEIs. These MEIs are members of your community. They all live here. This is for many of them, this is either there's kind of side side hustle while they're also working, or it's their, we're trying, you know, like, uh, one of them, one of our, uh, staff members is a retired nurse. Uh, one individ- individuals, or excuse me, a retired fireman, firefighter. Um, so, you know, one, one is a retired, uh, army medic, field medic. Um, and these are members of your community, residents of your community. Uh, one of the other concerns was that we decline autopsy requests. Like I said, we've never done that. I, I, I can't imagine it ever happening and me not hearing about it. So that, I'm very safe to say that that has not happened. I brought along statistics that prove this, this individual in, in, I'm not being flippant, so don't take offense to this. He, he's paid on an annual basis. He's paid a salary. I do not want this individual sitting around with nothing to do with. The last thing I, we would do is ignore a request for an autopsy to save money, because we're not saving money. This individual is getting paid, whether he's doing autopsies or not. And believe me, we run an operation where that, that just would not happen. That just would not, would not happen. I brought along some, uh, numbers here. I was able to pull up the previous three months of your autopsies for Ogumah County before we took over the contract in two thousand twenty, August first of two thousand twenty. I have the numbers that we have performed since we have taken over your services. We have performed more autopsies, more dusting investigations than, um, was handled before. Also, I would like to point out, respectfully, that, um, your medical examiners before we arrived were, uh, funeral home workers, um, of individual that worked at the cremation society. They were not formally trained as, as medical personnel as well. We, we came aboard, we took on those, um, individuals, we trained those individuals. Okay, everything that we do is above board, professional. Um, we feel like we are a great value because we are a one-stop shop. We offer everything. In general, any, any other o- operation that, um, does what we do, it's more of an à la carte services. They do a couple of things here, but they have to contract a couple of other things out. We handle everything. You have zero worries. I'd also like to point out that, um, forgive me, I, this is why I take notes. I get a little bit going here. I want to really talk, I, I want to really make the emphasis here on the fact that we have a, a quick turnaround. We pride ourselves in that. This gentleman perform, or excuse me, not performed, uh, was able to, uh, finish twenty-one autopsy reports a couple of weeks ago. In one week period, he finished twenty-one autopsy reports. Before this individual was brought aboard, we were averaging anywhere between one and four. Previous medical examiner that we had, and this is important, a lot of people don't understand it. I would not have understood it. Medical, most medical examiners are not pathologists. They cannot perform autopsies. That was the case with our previous medical examiner. He could not perform autopsies. So autopsies, in that case, if we did not have a, a pathologist on board, we would have to be sending those autopsies to, uh, Kalamazoo, Big Rapids, um, Lansing Spire Hospital. Um, that's very expensive. The transportation costs are very expensive because there are separate transportation costs. Again, we provide all those services at our site in Saginaw. We have an autopsy suite in Saginaw. Anyone is more than welcome, if you ever want to come down to Saginaw, and we'll take you through our areas of work. Again, um, I just, I feel that, um, with rumors in any window, it was incredibly important to make sure that we came up here in person to, um, make sure that we're getting across how, you know, the, the sincerity of our, uh, work, our personal work, relationships that we want to build, but also the fact that these, um, accusations or what have you are just, are absolutely unfounded.
Well, I, I wasn't here. I was on Zoom. I was quarantined. First of all, I would say thank you for taking the time out of your guys' schedules to come here. Um, what ended up, what happened, um, in the issue that I thought, from what I got out of the meetings, we had two individuals from MSP um, that wanted to discuss some concerns to the board. Um, and I believe they also spoke on behalf of the prosecuting attorney because she, she did not, um, come to the meeting. Um, so unfortunately, we have concerns brought to us. It kind of puts us in this difficult situation. Um, Sheriff, we asked you at the last meeting if there was any concerns on your end, and you were gonna talk to, to your detectives. Have you had an opportunity to do that?
I had a conversation with, with Anna yesterday. We're still
So you haven't talked to your detectives?
No.
Okay.
So you're the gentleman I spoke with yesterday. Nice to meet you.
Did you have an opportunity, Tim? Because I know you and I talked about it on Friday.
I actually talked to the sheriff. We were gonna arrange that, and the detectives weren't in. I, I think the, a bit of scheduling issue uh, that weren't available. Uh, but there was one question that did come through, um, email I received from EMS, and I'm not sure, maybe it was the sheriff I was talking to, and I'll talk to Commissioner Vaughn about the same issue. email I received from EMS, and I'm sure maybe it was the sheriff I was talking to, and I'll talk to Commissioner Vaughn about the same issue. And it wasn't so much that the MEIs didn't have the medical training, and, and I think we knew that they did. But what it came down to is did they have like scene investigation training? And believe me, I'm completely out of my element, so I don't know what determined.
No, no, that's.
But the concern was about, and I don't want to say crime scene investigating, I'm not sure that's what it is, but is there training available to your MEIs who do that? Do you offer that training? Are there opportunities for you to coordinate with the state police about what they're looking for?
Yes, sir. I appreciate you asking that question. Our Director of Operations is a former Saginaw County Sheriff's Deputy. Worked in Saginaw County 911 for many years, retired from that, came aboard. He was the gentleman that was trained every single one of our MEIs. MEIs is the term for the examiner, or the investigators. And they also have shadows with veteran MEIs while they're going through investigations in the beginning part, probationary period, or what have you. What, what an MEI does on scene is they, they report findings immediately to the medical examiner. Medical examiner makes a determination on whether there should be toxicology tests performed, an autopsy performed. And actually, if you don't mind, when we speak of MEIs, I would like to pass this along to our lead MEI, Stephen Heater. Stephen, just really quick, because these people's time is valuable. Can you just real quick, let everybody know your background and, and MEI services, please?
Thanks for having us, thank you for giving us this opportunity. My background, it's military, police, fire, EMS. As the lead investigator, every new hire goes through a job training, shadowing senior investigators. And until they reach the point where they're able to investigate on their own, they continue through that training program.
I'm sorry, can you speak up for us in the back?
Yes. So they go through an extended training period until they're able to be released on their own. There's training all the time, whether it's Zoom training. I trained with Michigan State Police Major Crimes Unit Photography. And these trainings are, you know, at various times, and everyone is welcome to attend those trainings and encouraged. But our role as investigators is to photograph the scene, document all information, family information, medical history, primary physicians, and we do follow up. So it's, it's a very complex job. Everyone works very hard. And we report back to Dr. Mahabir.
What's exciting, I just want to branch off. I just, I don't want to hear, I'm sorry. I know we're doing all the talking, but I just wanted to branch off before I forget. So the key to a medical examining investigator, and the sheriff will tell you, is their response time to a scene. Because what that does is that frees up the officers that are on scene to go pursue other call-ins or concerns or issues. If not, they're guarding the body for hours on end until a transport gets there. Again, we are very proud of our, of our response time in conjunction with that, simply because it does release the officers from the scene. You know, like, we were saying, we, we provide our own transportation services, we have our own fleet of vehicles. One of those vehicles is even a, a two-body vehicle, because oftentimes, when a transporter comes up to these areas, there's, you know, unfortunately, sometimes there's two, you know. So anyways, we have capabilities to do any, any, answer any concerns that were beyond the scene.
What I got out of their concerns were, were the lack of, they recommended autopsies and they, they weren't performed in, in, it sounded like on more than one scenario. It didn't sound like to me, and, and maybe I misunderstood, that it wasn't a one-time thing. Now, I did look over the contract, because you put that in our, in our, online there, you dropped it in. And it does look like, if I read that correctly, that we pay the same amount. So that statement that I made last week, I want to make sure that that is correct. We pay the same amount, no matter how many autopsies are done or not done.
Absolutely right.
Orderly invoice, it's, it's the same.
I mean, I think that this is, I think there needs to be communication between you guys, MSP, the sheriff, the city, I, I, I,
No, I don't.
Attorney, I mean, we're kind of putting in the center here, and you can't blame us for wanting to address this.
Not at all, not at all, it's your job to, to do this, because you represent your constituents, they have to have crap services. Again, I just want to relay this information to, I have tried to get a hold of the prosecutor. I attended a meeting in late December, where the, I was told that the prosecutor was going to be here, because I, I was just told by someone, some, someone, it was a gentleman, that there were issues that she had, concerns. I'm trying to answer those concerns, because I don't understand what those concerns are. As far as these two gentlemen, I don't know them personally. We're very easy to reach, where we have a website, we have, all our MEIs carry contact information. If that was a concern, I mean, again, we'll do our best then to make sure that the police officers on scene have all of our contact information. But again, all I can tell you is we have never declined an autopsy that a law enforcement officer or law enforcement agency has requested. And these numbers here prove that. So far this year, as of February 2nd, we've already performed five autopsies. Last year.
It's February 7th?
Yes, yes.
Yesterday.
Yeah, we just printed this out yesterday, so as of yesterday, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'm sorry. February 2nd, so I'm sorry for this year. No, in the last three years, we've only performed that. I'm sorry, excuse me. Twenty-two, up until yesterday, we performed fi- five autopsies. For the end of the year, 2021, the entire year, we handled 38 autopsies, 100 death scene investigations, nine non-death scene cases, hospital being called to a hospital, et cetera. Again.
Just run those numbers back.
Absolutely.
How many were crime scene versus non-crime scene?
I don't have those, I don't have those numbers right here. We can, but, so there were 38 autopsies done, so, and there were 100 death case, that, that's case scenes. A death case scene can be anything from a homicide to a person having a heart attack in their living room.
This is for Ogumah County you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Did I share this with you folks? I'm sorry if I did not. I apologize.
I, I don't see where that's relevant, I mean, I, I, I do, but I don't.
To prove that we're not declining, we're not declining autopsies, I guess that's.
Unfortunately, when they come to us and say that there is, I mean, that's a county liability.
Hundred percent right.
Exactly. Now, if there's a case where an autopsy is being declined, it means that it hasn't gotten to me.
Correct.
And now, that's something we need to hear about.
Correct.
And preferably, if I'm declined, no, the only person who can decline an autopsy is me. I don't want to do an autopsy. Don't bring it in. If these investigators, the police, everybody, they have other phone numbers except mine, Brian, Stephen. And in cases like those, they can always reach out to anybody. Now, if an autopsy, now I can tell you, as it is, if it is not, if, if there's no need for an autopsy, if it's a natural case, person dies at home, peacefully in their sleep, they have a long history of something. There's no need to delay funeral, delay, and do an autopsy. But if the family, for some reason, still wants us to do an autopsy, just bring the person out. So I actually end up doing a lot more autopsies than we should be doing, that are medical exam and autopsies. So in these cases where somebody is saying, we declined an autopsy, I would love to know, I would like to know, I would like to know those cases. Because then, how do we fill in the death certificate? Who fills in the death certificate? In cases like these, I'm the only one who can fill in the death certificate. So the information, I think, most likely is wrong, or somebody has other information, or that was not communicated properly. And if you could, we would like to get, I would like to speak with a prosecutor to see, or these people to see which cases those were, so we can always review them. Now, in these cases where we bring in and we do autopsies, now, I must say, Ogumah County is one of the safest counties I've seen so far, because there aren't many homicides. A lot of the autopsy cases we end up doing is people with no medical history, no PCP, or accidents. I do not think I have child deaths from Ogumah County as yet. Now, a lot of the cases I have, for a lot of my case load, fortunately unnatural. And now, between getting a call, doing autopsy, sending out the toxicology, now sending out COVID on pretty much every, doing COVID serology on everybody, getting back the toxicology results, interpreting this, doing the, doing the reports and everything. It usually takes, and updating the death certificate, it usually takes about two months, specifically because toxicology takes quite a while to come out, forever to come out. That being said, we try to work within, we work within national standards. The name, the National Academy of Medical Examiner, Examiners, have set the standards that we should turn around, get everything finished within 90 days. Currently, I'm, I'm finalizing cases from mid-December. So we have it around six weeks. And that being said, I have a couple of cases that's a bit longer, and those, because those are more difficult cases. So we're in national standards. We're doing a lot more for my cases, my decedent, my decedents, than needs to be done. Most places don't do COVID. Most places don't send toxicology on almost everybody. And if we need to, we'll send out genetics, molecular genetics, we don't do it in-house. Molecular, and if we have to, we'll find the labs and send it to. And there's no way we're going to ever fill the family for any of these deaths. If we needed to finalize a death certificate, we'll do it. If you have to send out for consults, I'll send out. Of course, in those cases, I'll call the families to let them know why I'm taking longer with autopsy report or the death certificates than actually is, than we, we should be. So in a lot of cases, I end up, especially every child case, I end up calling families to discuss what's happening. Because, I mean, nobody wants to shoot a paper. That's it, that's the final decision, that's the ruling. And nobody wants a death certificate, that's going to come as an ambush, right? So that's why we end up calling families, talking. Because it's more, because we're still, I'm still a physician, right? I'm never going to improve the situation for any patient that comes to me. They come in one way, I'm sorry, but they leave the same way. I'm in this for the people that live in, yeah, well, that live in, the families. So that being said, it may come to you that there are people with death certificates that have been pending for the longest time. When we do autopsies or before we send out toxicology, I sign a death certificate that says pending further studies. This means I have everything we need, toxicology, genetics, blood samples, swabs, so they can go ahead and they can continue with the funeral, start collecting benefits. And as the results come in, I'll update the certificate. And I'll usually call them and let them know all the funeral homes under them. So, but a lot of times, people think it takes so long, which is right. All right, you want, I mean, the person died, that's not wait the whole month, but unfortunately, it takes that long. So in those cases, they can usually call us, they can call, call the office, call me, and we'll work with them to try to update the death certificate as soon as possible, so they can start getting benefits. And that's a lot of what I end up doing, doing people these.
Can you set up a meeting? Can you attempt to set up a meeting with these gentlemen and our local law enforcement and our prosecuting attorney? So they can discuss this, and then bring, bring the findings discussion back to us?
Good question. So say there's a homicide, you're asked to do a autopsy. You personally do the autopsies, or do you have, like I use for a reference, you have a doctor, you have PAs? So the PAs work underneath the doctor?
Yes.
Do you have a staff underneath you that are doing the autopsies? Or are you doing them personally?
I have a staff with me, I have two PAs with me and autopsy assistants with me. My autopsy assistant does my, does paperwork, means filling, fills in the base, brings everything, runs behind me with a camera, runs behind me with a ruler. My autopsy assistants, they help me manipulate the body, move the body, move everything. I'm always here, and I'm always doing the, the. Every autopsy report you ever had, that has my signature, I was physically present. I touched the person, I looked at the organs, I interpreted the results, and I did the autopsy report under the DC. So there's never, ever going to be a case where, which I wasn't there. That what you're talking about, that's, I know. And that's, that's a luxurious trap to fall into, having somebody else do an autopsy for you while you're somewhere else. And that's one of the fastest ways to lose your license ever. So that's not something we do it. And that being said, nobody, I re, I'm sure, nobody really knows autopsies. But that's what I would prefer to be doing than anything else. Sorry.
Are you okay? Any questions, Commissioner Scott?
You have an idea out of these 100 death scenes, how many were?
Criminal? Criminal. No, sir, I don't, but I can get that information for you.
Because I, we can't be one of your biggest clients. You're dealing with Saginaw County, I mean, they're shooting people every day down there.
And, and again.
And then just the amount of deaths that happen, right?
Yes, sir.
Because I watched the TV, I mean, there's a lot more people die in Saginaw County than.
Death rates are up, and, you know, with, with, when we, when we have a contract for an annual basis, that factors in whether there's three autopsies during that period or 200, you know, so.
You guys brought up COVID. Because we, we pay, because the county pays for a medical examiner for every death that happens in Ogumah County, no matter if they live here or they don't live here, they visit here, we still got to pay for them. Do hospitals or doctors order autopsies? Or, or do they just order COVID tests? Or do they, you know, this COVID thing is just, you know, it's in the news every day, I mean, of course, I don't care what time of day. Morning news, noon news, evening news, everything. And, and of course, everybody's been talking about, you know, everybody else making money off this COVID. I mean, are we doing these COVID tests? Just, just curious, if you're doing COVID tests because the hospitals and doctors are ordering it?
No, 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 the hospitals don't order tests through us. If the hospital doesn't order tests.
Oh, they don't?
No, 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 through us, no.
Can they order an autopsy? Who can order autopsies?
The hospital is supposed to have their own pathologist to do an autopsy. So hospital in, in hospital cases, they're supposed to be doing their own autopsies. The autopsies we do are based on my own determination. If, are every non, not, every non-natural death, suicide, homicide, accident, or if you just don't know, has to have an autopsy.
Okay.
Um, in natural cases, if there is ample clinical history that the primary care physician or the hospital can fill in the death certificate, there's no need to do an autopsy. But if we don't know, then we don't know what to write. So, in that case, we'll have to do either an external exam or a full autopsy, so we can know what to fill in for the death certificate.
Mr. Sibrik?
Nothing.
I think we just need to continue communication. So you'll keep us updated, see if you're able to put together this, this, uh, meeting and discussion and.
I will. I'm trying to use, uh, schedule your end.
We did that.
And I will reach out to our law enforcement and our prosecutor. We'll find a mutually agreeable date.
Yeah. Appreciate that very much. Thank you for all your time. I appreciate it. And, and, and we're not, we're just kind of here protecting our image because these things are televised. So, people see these and then word gets out. And we just, it came to my attention the night before last, and that's when it was, I got in the phone with these two. Actually, we had autopsy scheduled today. We pushed off till tomorrow because this was, um.
They're not doing it, and they always.
Well, it's, it's common when there's something that occurs that comes up in twenty-four hours. Um, but, uh, we just received the bodies last night anyways, but.
This is definitely out of our scope, but.
Of course.
These problems were brought to us. It was our job.
Absolutely.
With them. So, our job is to protect the county from liability.
You're a hundred percent right, ma'am. You hear this.
So.
I've been on, I've been on Tech Mess, which is one of MSP guys.
Yep.
He's off work today, so he's not able to get on the, on the call or anything like that. But that was one of the reasons that I kind of jumped when he came up for public comment. I wondered. I wanted, I was hoping that somebody from MSP would be allowed to call.
Well, I think that.
At least hear what's going on, so.
I think that needs to be a private conversation amongst you guys. I don't think that needs to be televised. Um, and then we can, you can come forward with us with the summary and recommendations moving forward. So.
Appreciate all this time, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice meeting you as well.
I might make a trip down there someday.
Absolutely. You're more than welcome. Any questions? I can't stress that enough. If you're small, please be gentle.
You good? Okay, next item, we have item D, Dale Carnegie Course.
It's funny to give you a quick update. I did reach out, have made contact with, um, Carnegie people in Saginaw. We had a call scheduled for yesterday, but, uh, circumstances unfortunately prevented us from making that contact, so that's scheduled to happen this afternoon yet. So, I'll be reporting back to you on where that is. We were looking primarily at the cost of bringing the course here and, uh, having our department heads participate. And so, I'll just keep this on the agenda so you can continue to get the updates on where we are.
Item four E, ORV ordinance update?
And the same thing with the ORV ordinance. And we want, want to keep you up to date. I did, uh, receive a call from the city of Rose City. Uh, they did have a meeting where this was going to be discussed. They'll be forwarding those comments to me when they're ready. So, I'll share those with you when they arrive.
Did you send those to each township, uh, treasurer, uh?
Supervisor.
Supervisor, because I was at Logan last night and nobody recalled receiving this again.
Somebody did, but it wasn't always the supervisor, because the, sometimes the township has a different contact or sometimes it's the clerk. So, you know, trying to cast a wide net to capture everybody. Uh, Rose City, when I talked to the clerk there, yeah, they vaguely remembered seeing it, but it's just not something that's necessarily on their radar. So, it's just not necessarily remembered. So, by reaching out again and hopefully prompting and you going to your townships, bringing it up is, is helping to bring it forward. But also say what I'm hearing back is, we don't know. We, we don't have any complaints and, and I think we're gonna see more of that than we are a specific, uh, request to make a change.
At least responses. Can you forward, uh, I would like a copy of who all you sent it to so that then when we're standing in the meeting and they look at you like they have no idea what you're talking about and who did they send it to, at least then I have a contact.
Right. Okay. I can send you that list.
Yeah, I just talked to Hill Township the other night. I, they don't remember.
Don't know anything and no. I've talked to my townships and, you know, say, hey, if you've got concerns, then they remember getting them, but it's like, you can talk to me, you know, and I can bring it back to Tim or whatever, or you can go directly to Tim. You know, so.
None of my three recall receiving it.
Uh, we don't. You're putting information out so you can say, here's what we're looking at.
I prefer them to review it, look at it.
I don't disagree with.
They're all on the same page and they have it right in writing.
I'm just saying, you know, we're, we're a conduit as well, so.
The papers, the paper is reported that we've been talking about this. This isn't, you know, this is the thing. We don't represent the township. We're as up, as voters. We reach out to the townships for their input for a lot of their, like I said, on the planning. Even though the townships that don't have planning, we reach through the planning corps. You know, they all want to have a say. Now, we give them a chance to say and they don't want to say. What, I don't, you know, do we just skip by them and, and, you know? Here we're reaching out, asking for input and.
So, do we have a deadline? Why don't we make the deadline, um, at the, put this one more time in the next committee of the whole and that be the deadline to discuss this?
Okay.
I think it's been dragged out long enough.
Fine with me because ORVC is coming right around the corner.
I think it's been talked about enough.
And besides that, the sheriff's office is gonna need to know what they're gonna enforce, so.
You guys agree? Okay. That was quick. Item F, uh, proposed ARPA projects.
Couple of things first in terms of, uh, of respect for Mary being here. There are on your, um, iPads, uh, the requests from the fair. And Mary's done an outstanding job of detailing what some of those costs might be and what those projects are. And if you want to talk.
Mary, did you want to come up? Come on up. Are you okay with that?
We do have hard copies here too, if you want to see those, but they are on your iPads.
Now's your chance.
Talk.
Now's your turn.
I think I can just answer questions if you have them.
I, I do. I was looking at the, uh, from M thirty-three, uh, M thirty-three supply, excuse me. M thirty-three access. Yeah, and what was that for the, uh, non-fiber run? What, what is that exactly? It's twenty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars.
It's, ma'am, do you have the map?
Yeah, I do. Yep.
And the map shows where we have already installed and have working. We're halfway through with the project. And this would complete the project for broadband.
Okay, so this is for broadband for the fairgrounds?
Yes.
I didn't realize that much of it was already done. Oh, that's proposed. The blue lines are active.
Um, just to follow up on the M thirty-three access, it's all you'd ask Tom and I to meet with Mike from M thirty-three access. We did that, had a very good meeting, uh, just going over what, what they've got in store and how they're coordinating with, uh, not only other municipalities, but other vendors, uh, to have the most, obviously, most efficient project going forward for the county. Uh, I would, um, reiterate as I did to Mike is that there is a separate, uh, source of funding through the federal government for fiber, specifically for fiber. And we've asked Mike to look into that in a little bit more detail in terms of how M thirty-three particularly could utilize some of that. Um, and I did just yesterday receive additional information about, I'll share with Mike to direct him, uh, to actually get into the programs and find out who, who needs to support the grant. Probably it'll be the county, but who needs to, what the criteria are and so forth. So, that particular project may well fall under that umbrella rather than the county ARPA. But just as an update, um, that's where we'll stand with it.
So, this is, I, I mean, obviously, service is always an issue at the fairgrounds. Self-service and type of service. So, this is going to cover that, correct?
Correct. That, that will cover, um, the vendors. I mean, a lot of our vendors want to use credit card access, be able to sell product to good regards. So, it's very important.
And then the other one, I didn't, uh, know what it was for. It was from Brad Morris. Was that a jet, was that a generator? This is a five ton, uh, is this the right one? Yeah, northern refrigeration, five train air handler. What, what is that exactly? It's for sixty-three thousand dollars.
Air conditioning heater.
Is that what it is?
Ducting.
It, it says, and AC. Again, this is.
Air handler with AC.
Urbage that I don't know.
And in, down, down in the very bottom, I'm, I'm sorry, down at the very bottom left, that this is specifically for the chief Ogumah Pavilion. If you're familiar with that building.
Which building, which one is that exactly?
That's where, uh, um, the, the kids have all their animals very carefully. We, judging of the animals and showing.
Pavilion.
Showing of, that's where the auction is held.
So, this is for an air conditioner in that building?
Yes.
Do you guys have an opportunity to look this over?
Yeah.
There's some spray foam in there?
There's a generator too.
I thought I seen a generator, did I?
Yeah, there's the one from, uh, primary electric fail, one hundred twenty-five though.
That generator serviced the whole fairground or is it just gonna be tied to a single building?
It's, it's tied to a couple of buildings.
Um, wow.
Two hundred.
One twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's.
It's a generator.
It's a generator.
When you've got somebody that's got four million dollars, you go ahead and ask for the world, I mean.
Well, these, we asked them to do this and this is what they put together.
I know.
You've had conversation with Mary?
Yes.
It took a little while, but you guys connected.
Yes.
Do you have a number one, does the fair board have a number one priority out of the list that you provided to us?
Uh, no, all of them. Uh, the, the, the generator is, is an excessive cost, but it will cover, um, if, if the electric goes out, which it does. I don't have the figures in front of me, but I think about ten times I steer fairgrounds. Or, or out. But because we have the resources to utilize that, that building number one and, and the bingo building, for instance, if there's a catastrophe in Ogumah County and y'all need someplace to go, or some people need someplace to go, we need to make sure there's power there to be able to help those folks. And that, that covers the, the building number one, which includes a kitchen, so that you have that there.
Thank you. Anything else? We will put this on the list. We are composing a list, proposed ARPA projects. You're on there, we will add that.
So, to make the decision, no, I'd, I'd recommend go back and see your committee and, and give.
Priority.
Yeah, Jenny, an answer to her priority. Because there's, there's probably a bigger chance that you're not getting everything. Okay, so, I think she makes a good point. If there, is there a priority, priority one, priority two, priority three?
Because the fairgrounds is a huge attraction, is probably the biggest attraction in Ogumah County. Um.
For one week a year.
Well, yes, and now they have the camping.
I know you've got other events and stuff like that.
It's utilized actually quite a bit and it did lose a lot of revenue in the past two years with weddings and everything else because of this pandemic. Um, I, I do go to those meetings. Unfortunately, I don't think I've been to the last two, but there's one tonight I will be at. But, um, it, it is, that is something from out, out of towners talk about. You very rarely hear, um, anybody say that there's any better fair in the state of Michigan. Um, when you got out of towners coming in, checking out a fairgrounds like that, they like the area. You know, that increases the chances of them moving to the area. It's more revenue.
Coming to the fair and, and yes, that is one week out of the year. But it is utilized most of the rest of the year, particularly April through November, when we don't have snow on the ground.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. And you will, um, we'll be in discussion as far as a number one priority.
Number one priority, you will have it by tomorrow morning.
Perfect. Thank you. Did you want to talk about this?
I will, but jump back first. I've also attached to the material, a copy of that capital improvements plan that we worked through last year. That plan has a couple of dozen different projects in there. They're not all, uh, projects we want to consider with this. For instance, one of those projects deals with, uh, rotation on replacing patrol vehicles. I don't think we want to buy, you know, six or seven patrol vehicles now. I, I don't think that's part of the equation. But there are other projects that are listed in there that would certainly qualify. There's one that calls for renovation of one of the courtrooms. Uh, I know there's an awful lot of IT, uh, type projects on there that, um, again, maybe some timing issues to discuss. But these are all things that we've talked about in the last year or so that frankly would be on the table for consideration. Now, the other document that I put forward, I've been promising all this time that we would get some kind of a selection criteria put together. So, this is the first attempt at that. Um, the goal here is not to make this too complex. You see, there are only nine rows on this, uh, for consideration. Um, I mean, we could make it a hundred and twenty rows if we wanted to and have you evaluate each project against a hundred and twenty different criteria. But I think at some point, we're getting redundant on some of the questions. So, I tried to narrow this down. I came up with these nine, uh, primary areas. And I don't take a hundred percent credit for this. I did do a search for what other counties are doing across the country. So, this is sort of a, a conglomeration of those. Um, just take a look at that here over the next, uh, couple of weeks before the next county meeting. And if this is something that, that we're ready to move forward with, uh, we can talk about that. The possible score on the far right is very subjective. I mean, these are just numbers that, okay, if I was gonna consider a project, I think, uh, the impact versus effort should get the highest weighting. You might disagree, and that's great. That's the conversation we have to have. But ultimately, when you're asked to weigh the projects for top priorities, you want to use a consistent scale. So, that's what I'll ask you to do is to, uh, whittle this down. This might be fine. It might be, you want, uh, want the total to be, you know, a different number, whatever. I mean, we can talk that through and come up with what, what you want to see. These obviously are not cast in stone, but I did try to capture the most relevant components for the criteria. Uh, one other thing I wanted to walk out of here today with is some input from you that, uh, is, um, uh, motivated through the, the book that Jenny had recommended that we, uh, read, uh, what's it, Thirteen Ways to Ruin Your Community.
Thirteen Ways to Kill Your Community.
Kill your community, okay. So, the author had a pretty intriguing, um, exercise that he took some of his clients through that is really, uh, turns on the ear of the, of the direction I typically take a conversation like this. We usually talk about the positive impacts. What do we want to do with the outcomes? What do we want to impact the most? This author really flipped the script on this and said, paraphrasing, what can we do to really mess this up? So, we get to the end of two years and we have our, our news media that's evaluating this. And they're saying, boy, they really blew this. And here's why. And so, the question I want each of you to think about is, what would that be? What would that look like? And then we use that when we start talking about assessing these criteria. We use that as sort of our check and balance. We said that this project or this, this money would be wasted if we did this. Does that apply to any of these projects? And if it does, we need to cross it off the list, right? So, I just put that question out there. What would that look like? What could we do to really mess this up?
I had had a conversation with, uh, I, I came and discussed this with Tim at the Michigan Works meeting, a roundtable. Michigan Works, uh, their surrounding commissioners, one commissioner from, uh, some of the surrounding neighboring. And we got talking after the, uh, uh, meeting there of what they were doing with their ARPA funds. And they're totally, everybody's on total opposite ends of the spectrum. Um, Ross Common, uh, that commissioner reported, most of their monies are allocated already. They're primarily focusing on childcare. Um, I ask, oh, they are having a committee, um, their committee is being composed of elected officials, a commissioner, um, EMS, uh, law enforcement to discuss how they want to fund, uh, spend the monies. Gladwin County, um, there's our, uh, business professionals. No elected officials, no commissioners. Now, ultimately, the commissioners, yes, have the ultimate decision. Um, but it's, it was just very interesting talking to the other commissioners, um, seeing what their plans are, what their thoughts are, uh, totally opposite ends of the, uh, spectrum. And these are all neighboring communities that are very similar to us.
Ask school counties to put most of their money towards broad, collaborate with the townships up there.
Uh, this is so subjective to me. This scares me.
There's no perfect checklist and it really is what you want it to be. It's not something that anybody's telling you, you have to do.
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem taking our time. I, I'm already, I've already. I've already thought, I was still on Mark one day. About the treatment center, I mean, for the amount of money we spent on it. But maybe we should have looked at having more uses for that one building than just that. Maybe we should just went to a different building and or a different site, build a building that would house. Four, four things. I can see, I can see the other counties doing other things too. Uh, I've been to some township meetings, they practically spent all their money in one meeting. I mean, they just come up with so many ideas and they're just about ready to pull the trigger. And it's like, wow, we got four years to spend this, you know? Um, now on the on the priority list that we have, we can. We can take that top one off, the lost revenue replacement, that's that's no longer there, right, because it is all now lost revenue.
It is all now lost revenue and we affirmed that with a resolution.
Basically, the committed projects or the day treatment and the internal controls audit. How was that higher, the internal controls audit, is that a higher price tag?
No, it's about where we we said we were able to um. Use some department treasury money at state level two, they funded three quarters of the project, this was our share. Um, the day treatment facility uh should come in. Uh, probably would come in a little bit lower than that when the final invoices are in, which anytime now they'll be here. The lost revenue replacement, we did do fiscal years twenty one and twenty two uh already. You know, we haven't had the conversation moving forward, what we want to do yet.
But because we're under that ten million dollar.
Right, because we're under the ten million threshold, it really comes down to what you want to do with the funding. Uh, it's kind of like the uh standard deduction on your taxes, you know, if you come to a certain amount, well, that's what we're going to use. We didn't get more than ten million, so we're good to go.
Well, the the first step I'd like to see is that we. Agree to look at the county, but the things that pertain to the county rather than the outside, we've talked about it. But I'd like to know that we agree that we're going to look at what affects the county's business directly. Before we start looking at uh profits, townships. And and other. Other entities are funded different ways. We're funded straight to us, we're.
We talked about when I met with you last week about having a deadline for department heads um and elected officials. To come forward with their wishes or requests, do do we have that?
Think that deadline was the second, made it whole in January, so that that time would have passed. And we didn't get a lot of input, you see a lot of those projects on the list. And that's also why I wanted to make sure we included that capital improvements plan. Uh, because the departments did put an awful lot of thought into that, into into what they felt the needs were going to be from a capital perspective moving forward. So I think we've captured everything, that's not to say if a department suddenly thought of something that. You know, you shouldn't consider it, of course you should, but I think you've captured probably. The bulk of what would be proposed or what the departments have asked for.
Then I think what we ought to do is break out, break out what is the departments versus what is outside agents.
I agree. I agree with that.
And then start, then we're going to have to start, because there's so many on this list that it says unknown, we need to get known. What we're talking about in costs, so so that we can prioritize. You know, I mean, it's pretty easy, just it's going to be easy to spend four million dollars.
So what I'd suggest to make to make sure that we meet that goal is that uh maybe at the next meeting. We can prioritize the projects that are in the county and the ones that say unknown, we then test the department. But going back and coming up with a proposed budget to do whatever that project might be. Uh, in some of these cases, might be a a pretty intense exercise to bring somebody in, for instance, uh, I know housing asked about uh. Better security in their area. And so that means probably bringing somebody in to drop an estimate so that you've got a firm number to work with. So we don't want to necessarily go through an exercise like that if we're not going to consider funding it, so that's why I'm saying. We lay out what the priority projects are and then we target the ones that are at the top of the list and hold the other ones, um, you know, for future.
I I would, while we're discussing this, I would recommend you guys, anybody that's got the opportunity, Mr. Goodrow um handed this to me um. At one of the E D C meetings, probably about a year ago, he had three books, he handed them out and said, I recommend everybody reading this, well, I kind of tucked it away, I'm not going to. Lie when I he first specifically handed it to me, I'm like, oh my gosh, I was kind of offended.
So you're trying to tell me something?
I took it personal, which I shouldn't have, um, but anyways, um, again, New Year's resolution is started to read some some uh self motivating self help books, so I I. I broke this out on my vacation, I'm almost through.
I haven't written down and I was going to ask you where you obtained it.
And that's what it focuses on, different communities and what they've done wrong and what 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 they could have done differently. Um, it's very, very good, it is really truly, and I'm almost done, I'm close.
Well, when you get done, was it with my shirt?
I'll be done by next week, I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
So again, uh, Mr. Goodrow.
I'm going to get my copy.
Mr. Goodrow recommended it, so uh it it is very good and I pass it on to Tim, so. I think we need to uh is if you guys are able to read that while we're continuing to discuss that. Yes. Moving forward.
And I'm serious about how could we really mess this up? Just some thoughts, Don, I mean, one thought that comes to mind immediately to me is if we fund a project that's actually a ten year project and not a. Four year project or one that would go on indefinitely, I think that would be a failure. Because now we're also now going to commit general fund money into the future, maybe we want to do that. But by and large, I think you want to fund a project that's going to have an end date and an absolute cost, so we're not. Un- unknowingly committing ourselves to future expense.
I asked.
Like perpetual millages?
I asked was the best and there's uh some into the roof of the county building, the heating, that kind of thing they talked about, but Senator Vanderbilt did say spend your money very wisely.
Mm hmm, well, you know, one project that's here and I brought it up before and it's been brought to me. Is the energy efficiency improvements within this building. I mean, we spend a lot of money to heat and cool this place and. And there's just, just look at the building, you can tell why we're heated so much, we've got so much glass showing outside. And aluminum frame windows with. Any contractor will tell you has gone out the window. You know, you're just, you're just watching heat run right outside. You know. Heat Michigan outdoors, outdoors, you know.
Got to do is touch it and feel the frost in the winter time.
I'm looking at revenue, like what, how can we spend this money to continue to bring this county and to prove this county as far as from a revenue standpoint?
Well, I I I see some of that too, but there are some. Improvements here that.
Definitely needed.
Yeah. And then we're just not going to get after, we don't have the money to get after a lot of this stuff. The annex building repairs, I mean, we're looking at. Fifteen thousand dollars in insurance payment, you know.
See, to me, now that's a revenue because we're renting that, we're making money, I I shouldn't say we're making, we're not making money, but we are at least, we are. So I feel like that's something that is.
But it's just, you got to fix it, the problems there just have to be fixed, otherwise. We're going to have the roof cave in, I mean, you know.
In our nine one one center is going to drop.
All right, are we good?
Well.
I am, if you're ready.
I am, let's go, guys, I got about fifteen minutes.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Yes.
Item G, job description, custodial maintenance supervisor, custodian.
Okay, the story behind this. Appreciated version, uh, ago Monday, we had a grievance hearing uh concerning some things that were going on with our. Oh, courthouse and grounds uh department within the budget. And also the the employees who do the custodial work and maintenance work in the building. Um, it's actually, you know, for being a grievance hearing was not adversarial, it was actually rather productive and some ideas came out of the the meeting that I think will help. Help us be much more efficient in that area. But again, we stumbled across this issue that we've been stumbling across, at least in all of my history here, is that we don't have. Job descriptions for a number of our positions, including these two. Some of the disagreement that we had going on between employees was, well, that's not my job. How do we know it's not your job? Because we don't have a job description. So what I committed to do uh with the uh union is to. Present those job descriptions here today at committee of the whole, uh, the union has reviewed the job descriptions and concur, they've offered. Very constructive input on a couple of things, particularly one item that was missing that is now included. Uh, and that was the requirement of a driver's license, if we're going to require our employees to drive that vehicle, kind of need to be licensed, so. Um, that that was included, uh, another uh byproduct of this that you won't see, but you should know is happening is that we're actually creating a checklist of duties. That our custodial staff need to do not only on a daily basis, but also on a weekly basis, a monthly basis and even annually. Uh, so to make sure that all of our buildings are functioning properly. That way, with the physical checklist, uh, everybody will know what's getting done and if something was missed. The next shift coming in can say, okay, we need to pay attention to that as well, and and so it will help make sure all the jobs are being finished. So what I'd like to do is propose uh that you place on the uh meeting agenda next week, uh, a resolution to approve these job descriptions. And I think that will be a huge step forward for this department.
Well, I think, I think the big thing was, the other big thing was, who did they report to?
Right.
And this was, here we had one, one union member reporting the other, that that made the grievance process even tougher.
It was a bit awkward for the union having irrepresentable sites.
Yeah.
So that did get settled.
Um, yes, it did, um, uh, my last task is to write up the disposition, that has to happen uh by tomorrow. Uh, and get that to the union, but everybody left the room satisfied, so it was a successful meeting.
Do you just have an opportunity to review this?
Most definitely.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, no questions? Item H, corrections, facility, medical services.
We wanted this on the agenda so that we didn't miss it. Um, we don't have anything new to report yet, we uh sort of like with the uh. Overtime situation, one of the people that we need at the table is not available to us, has not been available this week, so we're going to use uh the opportunity when we sit down with that to also discuss. Uh, uh, medical services, you remember the components to this, considered mostly the uh prescription drug. Uh, component to this and how that lined up to what we were doing in the past. Brian and I had some very brief discussions about that already, um, we've got a handle on it, I think you're going to be, you know. Pleased at the outcome, but uh at the end of March, we'll have six months of this fiscal year behind us. Which will allow us to do a a good apples to apples comparison to what we were paying and then make our projection moving forward. Uh, but again, I think you're going to be uh pleased with the numbers that you see, it really does not look like it's eating into our savings. It doesn't look like it will, but let us uh line that up for you in a couple of columns so that you can see it. Let's keep it on the agenda until till we have all that data.
Agreed.
Agreed.
What's your description, Beth Peetler?
Um, that you already took care of when.
Updated the agenda after I printed these last night.
Yeah, so that was actually part of Brex, that and we didn't need to repeat it here, so.
Item, uh, I confidentiality policy.
Uh, again, another topic that we discussed at the last meeting, uh, that we want to keep on here until we have a resolution to it. If you have a question for the board, though, there are two ways to approach this and I've already uh, you know, begun working on a standalone policy for confidentiality. Also, uh, one of the priorities and we'll see that hopefully by again the end of next month is a draft of a personnel manual for our non-union employees. Specifically, oftentimes, something like a confidentiality clause is put into that manual. And the manual usually has at the very beginning is a statement that states the manual applies to all employees. Unless there's a conflict with the union contract and then union contract takes precedent. So two ways we could do this, one is to include it in that manual or make it a standalone policy. I don't have a preference and I wanted to know if the board had a preference.
Is that something they go through annually, that's reviewed annually, is this a one time upon hire?
Um, little bit of all of it, now anybody hiring in, of course, we'd want to sign off on this, but there are a host of policies that I think we want to have reviewed every year. This would be one of them, another one would be the uh harassment policy, we would want employees to sign off on each year. I've received it, I understand it, my questions have been answered, whatever, a statement to that effect. What we're going to do. Or at least attempt to do with the new uh payroll program that we're implementing, there's a module in there that allows us to uh. Send a message to each employee. It's been a year since you reviewed this policy, please review it and then authenticate that you've read it and it would do it all automatically. So I I think even though we haven't done it in the past, it seems like a lot, it sounds like we're going to be able to do this very efficiently. And almost immediately, as soon as we get that system up and running, attach some of these policies so that we get that checked off. And I would include a personnel manual in that list, you know, particularly for the non-union.
I think for sure we got to have. It's these type policies, yes, annually. And uh, if nothing else, but a reminder, but they have to sign off on that. Of. Con- uh confidentiality with with the medias that are popping up left and right, you know. Sure, I'm a little older, so Facebook seems to be the one that my face, but there's. I I keep hearing about other ones all the time. There's too much comp, but confidentiality needs to be held.
Countable. What you mean, absolutely.
And.
It's a safety and a courtesy.
And uh. I hear departments over and over again tell us, tell us that they're serving the public, well, they don't serve the public by. Leaking out information that. That the public needs to have held, we're the agency that holds their information and you don't need to be spreading it. The people.
I agree those, you know, that was mentioned last time, those are public documents, but um. Uh, there is also a period of time before. Uh, the public knows about what is occurring, so I, again, I think this is a safety and a courtesy.
To getting the. Information. People just don't. You just don't walk in and demand, there's methods to getting it.
Did you have an opportunity to ask any, any other counties if they had some type of policy?
I've actually looked at other counties' policies.
So there are policies.
Online there, but there again, there's some of them are embedded in personnel policies, some of them are standalone.
And and I had told Tim, that's what we have to do annually is we have to uh reminder, pleasant reminders, we have to sign off, re-read and it kind of re-initiates. Um, behaviors and and uh.
Well, I saw this in the road commission meeting just last month, they had an issue about residents, they have residency requirement. And. Uh, that person was briefed when he was hired eighteen years ago and he signed off on it, but you know, he didn't remember. And of course, he did go to the board and ask them or the manager, because manager they don't like, so. You know, he went and out moved outside the required, the core requirement, then wanted to plead, hey, I didn't know. No, you did know, when you hired on, we told you.
So how would he, your your question to us is if you want this standalone or if you want it in the in the policy and procedure manual, correct?
Right.
Confidentiality, of course, no.
I.
I think it should be standalone.
I agree, I agree.
Review, like most, I mean, I I go back to my former wife. We had annual reviews of policy personally, you know, you sit down. Department rules and regulations once a year.
Friendly reminders.
I have reviewed, understand.
Correct. You guys okay with that? So are you going to bring like a template to us?
Bring you a draft next town meeting.
Perfect, okay, item J, Riker River intercounty drain.
Okay, Tom was trained enough, I think, to share the uh agenda with you, the intercounty drain is actually meeting right now. I wanted to point out that um.
We can't do anything.
I missed it, where is that posted?
It was a separate email he sent out, uh, and I think it's on the web page now, if you're able to access that. Uh, but I might just point out in that agenda. It it, this is moving along exactly like I projected it would, what you see on the agenda for today is a contract to approve. Uh, an agreement with a law firm. The contract to approve an agreement with an engineering firm. Now, I know that in the meetings, and I don't mean to stir up pots again that have already been stirred, but in the meetings, it was stated, there are no projects in mind, we can only. Assess up to ten thousand dollars for the entire drain district, but I'm here to tell you. This agenda is really pointing to, they've got a project in mind, if they're looking at hiring engineers now, uh, of what those might be. So just be prepared that that's probably coming, again, I think somebody just said, there's nothing we can do about it, pretty much is the case. Pretty much is the case, but there is something called accountability, and, and one thing that you can do as a board is hold the. Inter County Drain Board accountable by just keeping up with what's going on and disseminating information as much as you can.
Have we asked our, uh, cause it's still being talked about at all my township meetings, um, have we asked our new legal counsel to, to. Their opinions on, on this?
We have not.
Is that something you guys?
We can ask, my understanding is we're.
But we don't know till we ask, and I think if we just, if we just continue to go with the flow here, it's.
And I'm just going.
Well, there's any, if there's any projects or anything like that, now, now our drain commissioner would be involved with that, our drain commissioner just. Held from voting.
Right, correct.
He's still involved with the whole thing, so, you know, right now they have a meeting. Maybe Mike can come to our meeting and.
Can we ask?
Brief them what's going on.
Can we ask him to?
Yes.
At our meeting on Thursday?
You want him next week?
Yeah.
Doesn't have another meeting.
If he's able to, if not, at least you and him can touch base.
Sure.
Did you get all the information that you requested, the FOIAs from Aronet County?
Right, the FOIAs were, that they didn't, I asked for contracts, and they said, at that point, they didn't have any, I suspect after today they will. Uh, my next follow up was going to be to ask for any invoices that they have, uh, paid. That will be applied to the Rifle River project, uh, and then we'll see, you know, what, because clearly there were engineers referred to in those hearings, so. You'll be able to see what was, what that cost was, uh, for the work that was done. See, Randy's got something.
And so they didn't, they didn't do the engineering study for free.
Well, the engineering firm reached, reached out to us last week for copies of our GIS database.
Oh, no.
So they're working on the project without contract or whatever.
Could be right.
Amalgamers are updating our GIS to get current information from them.
That Spicer's, right? Oh, no.
Well, they're gonna have to hire somebody, three, three guys are not going to. Make sure that stuff, which, which property gets built and everything like that, they're gonna hire somebody. Make sure that.
That's why Spicer wants our database for our BSA and GIS, and. Because our GIS hasn't been fully updated and isn't embedded with our BSA yet, it's one of the projects I'm gonna have to talk about, but. There's just more work for them to do it, but the engineering firm will be working on that to map out the proposed area. That's what we talked about last week, so Spicer Engineering is working on that.
Do you have to provide them with that information?
Uh, I think they get FOIA and, and get the information, I mean, it's pretty much public information, all of BSA is public.
Right.
You want to fight it?
I just asked a question.
I mean, I, I gave them permission to contact Amalgo about the updated GIS information, because. We, we give our GIS database away for the real estate companies to utilize and stuff, so we're not. Not giving that information to other entities, I guess.
How do you guys feel? Do you want our legal team to, to look at this? Do you want to hold off to see what became out of this meeting from today? What do you guys want to do?
We can ask them, but my understanding from, I, I talked to Mike, and he basically said, we're in it because we can't get out of it. That was his opinion.
That was his opinion.
Right, and I don't know, you know, what he based his opinion on, but, I mean, certainly wouldn't hurt to ask.
Commissioner Scott?
It's included in the retain, we can ask, it should be included in the retain, so why not?
Yeah.
It's not gonna cost us anything, right?
Right.
Yeah, if it doesn't cost us anything, go ahead and ask, but.
This is gonna cost all of our kind of residents our money.
It is.
For the legal, for their opinion.
Basically, when I got out of the meeting, it's, uh, out at the fairgrounds that day, it was the. Firm there.
I wish she was on our side, she was amazing.
It was Spicer's that initiated this with the drain.
That's the information we were trying to get for that FOIA.
They kind of started.
But you never, they never.
There. The, the indication from, from the FOIA, well, they didn't admit it, it did look like it was actually the drain commissioner that officially initiated, uh. The proposal, but yeah, it's not what I got out of the meeting.
I agree with you, I was talking with the lawyer, that, that lawyer, I wish she was on our side, she was amazing, but, all right, so you'll let us know on that? Okay, the last public comment, uh, this is item five, this is, uh, three minutes, this is to any, any, um, subject matter, is there any public comment in the room? Come on up.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, I'm Jackie Schultz, I'm the family court clerk in the clerk's office, working for Breck. Um, so I am here actually on behalf of the staff in the clerk's office. Um, I'd like to address some of the points that were made earlier, and also kind of relay some of the discussion the staff have had in improving our office and, um. Just overall public and court service, so about the training a full and part-time person at the same time. Megan Rose, the criminal court clerk, and I actually did that exact same thing about six and a half months ago. We came in at the exact same time, and we were trained simultaneously, and that was a beautiful learning experience, and a great asset for Breck and Diana, who were our trainers. Well, we're naturally a man down, so, um, this part-time person, we believe is gonna be incredibly beneficial to our office. Simply because they have the capacity, it'll, it'll give everybody the capacity to put more. Quality into the quantity of our workload, which our workload, it, it is a big quantity. And we're all learning, and we're, Megan and I are very new, and we're all very new at our jobs, and we want to do quality work. Um, so speaking specifically for Tracy Turner now, this part-time person will give the full-time person. The necessary and uninterrupted time to learn their financial duties. Um, Diana has twenty plus years of service, and there is a whole lot to learn. Um, the purpose for this part-time person, as Breck stated earlier, is CPLs, and relieve some of the weight of. The counter and the, you know, the public immediate work, people coming to the counter. So. It's so the court, the court clerks also, we can address some of these noted concerns and requests for improvement directly from our county judges. Um, like I said, we're, we're all learning, and we're all very new, and we want to do a good job, and. Support would be wonderful to have that, to do our jobs wonderfully. Um, so Tracy wanted me to say in reference to the approved forty hours that were for her and Diana. That, you know, just noting us court clerks, we're not financial, we have absolutely no capacity to help in. The new full-time person learning financial abilities, we, that's not the realm that we're in. And Diana's twenty years of experience and knowledge, they're not gonna be filled easily. And personally, we don't believe that they can be filled by one individual person, it's gonna take a beautiful team with an awesome leader. So, um, like I said, we're all fairly new, but we've all discussed that we're. Dedicated and we're invested to actually serving the county, the public, and the courts well. You know, this is, this is where we come from professionally, so that's all I have, and thank you, thank you very much.
Good timing.
Any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone?
Did you have public comment? I.
Was that yes?
Yes, Ladonna would like me to remind everybody that next week is.
My five dollars.
Is the shadowing. Um, that starts at nine AM, our meeting also starts at nine AM. She would like everybody to meet down at the steps, swear everybody is, and then come back here to start. Officially start our meeting.
Say that, I'm sorry, say that again.
She wants everybody to meet out at the stairwell.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, nine AM, I'm gonna swear in all of the kids. And then come back in here and.
You're asking for the start time to be moved tonight.
Yeah.
I don't think there should be a problem there, because I don't think our agenda is gonna be that, uh, lengthy, correct?
Right.
Some of the stuff we can combine.
Order right now.
We don't have a problem, we don't, we don't have a problem with that, he can change that posting, and remind me, we're supposed to pay five dollars for food, okay?
Kenny Jar, uh, are posted.
Can we reflect that?
Yep.
Uh, only one thing I'd like to say about the R- R- Project, I think we. We may not have to spend right away, but we should really start taking a hard look at what we can do for whoever, because a lot of people are sitting on. Pins and needles waiting for us to say whether or not, I, I know the library people are waiting to know if we're gonna buy out. Buy an elevator. Okay, and every day they're open. Okay, the fair, the fair might be open, but they're, they're, they're not out of power every day. But, uh, the library's open every day, I get, I get calls, they'd like to know if we're gonna do this. And I keep saying, we have prioritized anything.
So why don't we put a dead, how do, what do you guys think about putting a deadline for these requests from, uh, from at the county, or at the township level? Why don't we put a deadline for all requests?
That's fine, uh, we already got some, and.
We have quite a few, but why don't we put a deadline, there's no more after this, and then we have our list composed. We have our list composed, and then we can move forward with what list we have. And prioritize those.
Just saying that before we. We, we're gonna prioritize the system real quick here, because some people are just waiting to know whether or not we are. We may not.
What's your thoughts on a deadline from, from townships, villages?
Uh, well, I, it's been out there, so the end of the month.
End of February?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they've had more enough time.
Just give everybody's committee a little.
Brand new.
Any other public comment, in the, on the phone? Other public comment? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
You don't, just declare it.
I have support, we're gonna be adjourned at eleven twenty-one.